Okay, everybody hear that? Call meeting in order, can I have a roll call? You couldn't hear that, John?
Yes, I heard.
Okay, we're gonna have a roll call, please, Joanne.
Brian Card.
Absent with notification.
Becca Lawrence.
She's trying to sign on, she'll be in with us shortly.
Hello.
Are you here?
Hi, who am I speaking to?
This is here, Maria.
Hi, this is Becca.
Okay.
I don't know if I do, whether I just sit here with my phone or what the next step is.
You sit there with your phone, Berger, you leave it on, you have a question, you call.
You're not talking to, you're talking to me at my home, you know, I'm on the phone just like you are.
Okay, so, alright, so just hang on, I think they're trying to connect us up.
Okay, Joanne.
John Serenopol- John Serenopolis?
Yeah.
Is here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Webex. Matthew Wendar?
Here.
Michael Huco?
Absent with notification.
And Keith Thurlo?
And I'm here too.
Did you say, Berger?
Yeah, I said, "I'm here too."
Thank you, Berger.
We got it, thank you. Okay, uh, there's no alternates to see. Any addendums?
Just what you have in front of you, um, there's another document that I will pass out to you when that application comes to.
Alright. Citizens' comments on items not subject to public hearing. Let me read this. Public comments.
Uh, doesn't appear that there's anybody on for that, uh, on the call, and there's nobody in the audience, other than applicants.
So we don't need to read it?
Nope.
You sure? It's been three years.
You, you can read it if you'd like. You can read if you like. You don't have it memorized by now?
I try not to. Um, okay, anybody here wants to speak to, uh, to us about something that's not in the public hearing, something you want to complain about, or? Special permit application number twenty-three dash thirteen twenty-two JPF Rentals LLC. Uh, that lot is continued due to a sickness by the applicant. So that will go on, uh, February twentieth. Special permit application number twenty-three thirteen twenty-four, John LaLuca, Jack Helfgott, Christine McGannon, that's Weld LLC, landowner five forty-three, Warrigan Road, GIS map two-six-two, lot twenty, two acres, general commercial to create an all-interior climate-controlled self-service storage facility fully contained in the existing building. Under general, uh, section four twenty point two point two Q, self-service storage facilities, section seven hundred, special permit, continued from twelve eighteen. Um, he's asking for a waiver for the survey. Uh, is somebody gonna present that, or?
Yes, they're, they're on the TV screen.
Please introduce yourself.
Christine McGannon is here, and I believe that's Mr. Helfgott.
Yes, yes, hello. And my partner Christine is here. John is not able to join us this mo- this evening.
Okay, go ahead and present, Mr. Helfgott.
Okay, so, the, the, the survey, in regards to the survey, that was previously done when the, uh, property had been rezoned from, uh, commercial to, uh, light industrial. So, that was already, the survey's already on file. So there, you have, yes, you have it on the screen. Um, what we're asking is to make no changes to the building at all, or the foot, the land, the, the landscape, or the footprint of the building. We simply want to build a climate-controlled self-storage facility within the parameters of the existing building.
They did put the answers down with this.
Yeah.
Yes, I just wanna say, if we have, I can go, I can go through the permit applications line by line if you'd like, I just honestly figured that you all had it in your packet, and thought we had done a pretty good job of answering to every point, and thought that if you had any questions for us directly, that might be a simpler way than my necessarily going through it.
Well, I think for the-
Giving through what you are doing.
Sir, I think for the record, you could just briefly skim through this and, uh, real quickly.
Okay.
Paraphrase most of this stuff. It has to be on tape, over there, it's on tape.
Okay, sure, I understand, okay. So, um, the facility will be fully self-enclosed, so, um, you know, the doors, the doors will be locked. So that, that covers security and fencing for controlled access. Uh, for controlled access, there'll either be a key card or a code if people enter it to come through the door when, when, when the office is not staffed, uh, the, the office, there'll be an office on-site that'll be staffed. Tenderly, we are planning Monday through Saturday to have regular office hours, um, so that people can come in and rent, or deal with anyone, or deal with any one of us. There will be a lot of book of law renters kept on-site. We don't plan on having any outdoor storage, um, so that, that won't be a problem. We don't propose any outdoor storage of any vehicles at the facility. In, in regards to auctions, we don't have any problem not exceeding six times per year, we would not assume that we'll-
If I, if I might, I, I'm just curious, um, what, what is this stipulation on the, why is that a regulation with regard to the auctions? I'm just curious of why there's a limit on the auctions, I mean, the state has very strict guidelines as outlined in, uh, chapter seven forty-three, um, so with regard to how auctions are handled, so I'm just, I'm just curious, I don't have any issue with the limitations, I'm just curious of why the town had that stipulation.
Amberie?
I believe when we were going through this for self-storage facilities, um, I believe there wasn't necessarily knowledge of the state's requirements at that point in time, so we wanted to make sure that it didn't, wasn't turned into an auction house, um, is the way that the commission members at that time had said that. So, knowing that you are complying, and as long as you comply with the state regulations, um, that's why we say six, not to exceed six. So-
So six?
Can you imagine a situation where you would have more than six per year?
Um, more than six auctions?
Yeah.
Or more than six events where there would be auctions?
Yeah.
So is that, is that what the stipulation is? Is it actually, it says not to exceed six times per year, that doesn't necessarily mean six auctions, because you could have multiple auction, multiple units, um, being auctioned at an event.
Yeah, we understand that, that you can have, you can be auctioning off like si- maybe six to twelve units at any one time, but when you advertised it, we were thinking, the, again-
Yeah.
I'm trying to put myself in the commission when this was going through, they were thinking that usually, you know, once, um, six times a year would allow it like once every two months, so that would be more than enough for-
Yeah, I know, I think it is, I think it is, I think it would, it would definitely work, and, um-
Okay.
Please understand, in a perfect world, in a perfect world, we're gonna have zero auctions, because the only thing we have is often, I mean, because people weren't paying the, the rent on this storage unit, and that's obviously not a part of our business plan. We, we, we understand that that's a reality, but it's nothing that we are, um-
Right.
Yeah, we believe it, it's a lot of work, and, you know, it's extra work, so it's something we, we would want and have to do.
We were looking at six auction dates per year, and maybe that's where we should look at. Six auction dates, not necessarily you can only do six units at a time.
Okay.
And also, just for your knowledge, uh, the auctions, like, they're not like, you may, might have seen on Storage Wars or one of those shows, they're done primarily online now.
Okay.
So it's not that there'll be someone, an auctioneer, there opening up, uh, units and auctioning them off live.
So could I have a clarification on, um, is that required by state? Is that state statute of six auctions, or is that just our?
I believe it was the commission's.
It was just ours, so the state doesn't mandate any kind of-
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And I think their concern was, is they were afraid, like, what if we have more than six units at any one time? They were thinking it was six units, as opposed to six auction dates, when we were, I think when we were discussing it, we were discussing six auction dates.
Right. Okay.
No, that wor- that, that works.
Okay.
Yeah, and to reiterate what Jack said, it's, it's not, um, you know, it's an online process, and very quiet, the winner comes in, the winner of the auction comes in, and, uh, you know, takes care of, um, emptying the unit, and you do, so you don't have, there's not a lot of traffic, there's not a lot of people coming in, um, it's just that one person who actually is the highest bidder on the auction that comes to the facility, so, just so you know, that's not, you know, the situation.
In regards to the copy ball state of Connecticut, licensing must be submitted to Planning Development Office, uh, we will comply with all Connecticut licensing requirements, and have no problem submitting all of that to Planning and Development Office as required, and we'll have that displayed as required by law in our facility. Accessory uses, um, any, any accessory uses or merchandise sales that we have would comply and meet with all zoning regulations required. The only type of, uh, really merchandise that might be sold would be things like a lock for the person's locker, or, um, not necessarily merchandise, but insurance for their, for their belongings in the locker if they desire to purchase insurance.
And, and just, and basic packing materials, box and tape and that kind of thing, but it's very, very minimal merchandise.
So you're not planning on having rental equipment?
No, 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 we're not looking to be a tailor rental or anything like that.
Okay.
This is gonna be, honestly, it's a very simple, clean business. Electrical service to the storage units, we're gonna have, uh, just lighting, lighting in the building and climate control, there's not gonna be individual, uh, electrical service to storage units. The, no, and no plumbing facilities, water drains will be allowed inside the storage Well, we're not gonna, in regards to, to, to I, goods and property stored in the self-storage facility contained within the building except recreational vehicles, at this time, as we've said, we don't intend to allow any outdoor storage of any vehicles, recreational or otherwise, um, so, all goods and property stored at, at, at our, at our facility will be stored within the confines of the building. Truck loading docks, are the loading docks that currently exist on the building, and they're gonna remain as is, we're not, we're not looking to, to put any additional loading docks on the building. I believe there's, uh, the two loading docks on the, uh, the side road, not Lo- basing the side road, not Warrigan Road, but, uh, oh, I'm drawing a blank on the-
Lushen.
Lushen.
Thank you, yes. So there's two, two docks there, those will continue to exist, uh, we don't anticipate a lot of usage of those loading docks, honestly, uh, most people-
Yeah, because of the height, we-
Right, they're too high for the loading truck. So, um, all parts of perimeter adjacent to residential zones will be screened by a fence or a wall with a landscape buffer, um, I don't believe, I'm looking here quickly, I don't believe that any, no changes in, to, to, to the footprint, so setbacks and orientations of buildings are gonna remain unchanged, so it exists exactly as it does now, all any buffers or anything will be the same as, as it currently is and has been. Dark sky lighting, all outdoor lighting will be dark sky compliant, actually, uh, Weld LLC already, uh, installed as per their, when they had done their due diligence prior to our purchase, when they were looking to do the, uh, light industrial had already installed dark sky compliant lighting at the building.
And I, why attach the specifications of that lighting with the application, um, is that, that is all new lighting on the exterior?
Prohibited uses, we will obviously comply with all prohibited uses, uh, kenneling, kenneling of animals, there's gonna be no, no animals, no, nothing, i- i- it's, it's dry storage, um, we're, we're not, units will not be allowed to be used for residential office or retail workshops, or anything like that. Um, at any time a person moves in, they're gonna sign a lease between, between themselves and the owners, which would be us, um, that will expressly prohibit all the items and activities outlined. I think that pretty much covers, I believe, everything that was in the permit.
Mm-hmm, that's it.
I've got a couple of questions, um, so how many units are they?
We currently don't, uh, we don't know, it, it's roughly fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet, depending on our configurations, which we have it.
And I'd say we're still working with the-
Yeah, we're still working on, I mean, the current plan has about a hundred and eighty, um, units inside, I don't, I don't think it'll be that many, because they, they have a lot of small units, so we're still tweaking that unit mix, and, um, but just so you know, it's, um, roughly fifteen thousand square feet of actual storage space, because we do have an office, you know, we do have square footage allocated to office.
Always.
Things, so-
So, so is there, um, two levels of smi- of storage, or just one level?
Right now, we're, we're looking at, at, at just the, the floor, the ground level, the, the store, the storefront level. We will work to develop the downstairs at a later date, but at this point, that's not, that's not part of our plan yet at this point, we haven't gotten, quite honestly, that.
I mean, we would, we would ideally like to be able to utilize, I mean, we ha- we'll have to see what the, uh, demand is, um, ideally, we would like to break into the, the bottom floor as well, but right now, it is the roughly fifteen thou- it's fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet, it's about what we're gonna be able to get on that first level.
So are you changing the signage, the outs- out there, outdoor signage for the facility, are you planning to propose that?
So what, what we're going to do for signage is, where it used to say Bennys on the front of the building?
Okay.
We are tenderly, we're, we're thinking we're going to call it Storage on Twelve, and we will put up a similar type sign, a, a storefront mounted sign, uh, if there is any lighting for the sign, it will be dark sky compliant, and at the time that we do that, of course, any necessary permitting would be requested.
So nothing, nothing's being propl- proposed for along the street line at all?
I, we hadn't really, uh, considered, considered doing that, um, I'm not saying that we wouldn't, but we would, we would apply for the necessary permits at the time if we did.
Is that, I mean, we, I wouldn't mind utilizing the sign that's there-
Right.
-on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that would require coming back?
Wait, Amberie, if, no, I don't think so.
No, the, the sign, there's already a pre-existing freestanding sign there-
Yes.
And from when I talked to them, they were talking about just doing a reface of that sign, so it'd be the same size, same location, it's already in existence, they don't want to create a new sign.
No, I, so I made a question, was cha- any changing of it?
No, no, no.
Honestly, we, we, what, what we're, what we envision is basically, uh, it's gonna be basically the exact same thing as it was when it was Bennys, except that it's gonna be, and when you go inside, it's gonna be a self-storage facility.
So was there any planned fencing going up on the ex- around the exterior of the property at all?
No.
No, because, because the building is self-contained.
Okay, so its security will be the building itself?
Exactly, there will be no, you know, everything will be accessed from inside the building, and you'll have to have, you know, coded, coded entry to get in, other than the, other than obviously the office, um, getting into the office, but the office isn't, you know, connected to the storage.
Is there-
And that will have a lock, and that will have a lock to it as well.
Yeah.
Is there any full-time employees gonna be there, or is it just somebody intermittent?
No, no, it will be ma- it will be ma- Jack or myself will be there, uh, it will be owner-operated, it, it's not gonna be a self-service facility, it will, we will be there, um, you know-
Right now, the plan is six days a week.
Six days a week, yeah.
Any other questions, commission members? Berger, John, Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
If, if this isn't an auction house, what triggers an auction? You know, out of curiosity?
Non-payment of rent for a unit. So if a person doesn't pay their rent, they will receive a notice that they need to pay their rent, and they're given a, a timeframe, I believe typically ten days, to pay the rent and-
Well, it's, well, it's ten days when you're, when you're late, it, it's, um, you k- it's, it's a really strict process with the state of Connecticut, I don't have the exact days, but it's at least, uh, I believe it's forty days you would have to be late before you can start the auction process, and then, um, there's certified mailings, there's many documented attempts to get in touch with the tenant, and, um, it would really be as a, a, you know, our, it, where, it would, we're really not gonna be in, in the business of auctioning people's stuff, if, unless we absolutely have to, I mean, it's not, we're not gonna run this like the bigger, um, you know, real estate investment trust companies do, like the Cute Smarts, I mean, we really wanna be decent to people and give them every chance to, um, pay their rent, so it's really as a, as a last, uh, it will give every, will give, will give folks every opportunity to, um, pay before we would do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, Matt?
Um, the only thing that I was wondering, you, the light fixtures, um, that you submitted, I guess I was just wondering how many of them and where they'd be located around the perimeter of the bin- the building?
I think they're existing.
They're existing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the only thing that I would be wondering then is, uh, if these have any impact beyond the bounds of your property, 'cause it's a different fixture, so the throw of the light itself might actually extend beyond existing light fixtures, even if they are dark sky compliant, so that would just be something that I would be curious about, but.
Honestly, the bit, I, I couldn't answer that question because I haven't been there at night to see, and seen them turned on.
Mm-hmm. All I do know is, if, the current owner, Brian, had, um, he had told me that it was his answer to, um, exterior lighting when he came, uh, to you folks for his permitting, so I believe whatever it is that he did was in compliance, um, because he's the one who retrofitted that lighting very recently, so, you know, within the last couple of years, with his, with his light industrial conversion, so, um, I don't, you know, I guess we shouldn't assume, but I would assume that they are compliant, because it, he did that as a, um, he did that as an answer to something that was requested of him with his permit.
Okay. Um, any more questions from commission members? Berger? John?
No.
John?
I'm, I'm good.
Matthew?
I am all set.
Anybody from the public wanna speak? Um, okay, I, I guess that's, I guess we're done. Somebody want a motion to close this public hearing?
I'm making a motion to do that.
Motion by Berger?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Matthew. Okay. Motion made and seconded, and any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Okay, it's closed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep. All right, um, resubdivision application number twenty-three dash thirteen twenty-five, Gary Jaworski, Stephen and Marilyn Jaworski, landowners, sixteen zero-two North Road, GIS map twenty-one, lot eleven, nine point four-three acres, rural development, resubdivision of lot number eleven into two lots. Yes, sir, introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Is that mic on? Is the green light?
Is that better?
Bring it in close, please, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna make sure, the light's on, I don't hear my head.
I think, I thought one of those didn't work.
Number thirteen.
Test.
There you go.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone, my name's Daniel Blanchett, I'm a licensed civil engineer, I'm here tonight on behalf of the owners, Stephen and Marilyn Jaworski, and the applicant, their son Gary. We're seeking your approval this evening for a one-lot resubdivision. Mister and Misses Jaworski want to split off a lot for their son Gary to build a single-family home. The site is located at one-six-zero-two North Road in Killingley. It's near the intersection of Tucker District Road. This property was created in nineteen eighty-eight by a previous subdivision, the site's about nine acres in total, and we're proposing to s- cut off about three acres for Gary. It's a, a pretty simple project, there are some wetlands that cross the site, we did get wetland approval last week, um, it would be a family transfer, so there's no donation of open space required. Um, on Friday, I got a letter of comments from the town's engineer, he requested that I add a driveway detail, and also, uh, there were some easements on the originally approved subdivision that my plan had omitted, and so I've added those two easements, there's a twenty-five-foot slope easement in favor of the town of Killingley along the road frontage, there's also rights to drain, unrestricted rights to drain, um, again, the wetlands are just from, from catch basins on the road that discharge across the property. Again, it's a, it's a pretty straightforward project, basic single-family home, three bedrooms, raised ranch-style house, we are complying with all the zoning regulations, and that's really all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, this is a resubdivision?
Yes, sir.
So everything has to be landscaped, you know, when it's all completed, so for, as a re- as part of the resubdivision application. Um, and there was a, something that had to be posted on here, that it's a family, when you submit-
There's a, there's a paragraph, staff will try, we'll get a copy of it for you, it has to be posted on the front page of your subdivision saying that this is a family transfer, and that if somebody from the family sells that property, within so many years, they're gonna owe taxes, that sort of thing.
Sure. Okay, makes sense.
And that there was no fee in lieu of, and there was no open space required because it was a family transfer. We'll get that to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and the plans, is, I mean, they say resubdivision on them? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I just wanna make sure that there's a full knowledge of landscaping requirement as a resubdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any other questions from the commissioners? It's hard to see from this-
From me.
What's that, Berger?
Not from me.
So what was the width of the driveway? I, it's hard to-
The width of the driveway?
Yes.
Um, the driveway's gonna be twelve percent, twelve feet wide, sorry.
Twelve feet wide.
Yep, and that's indicated again on the driveway detail, the ele- eight-and-a-half-by-eleven plans that you have in front of you might not show that driveway detail, um, again, I received those comments on Friday, so my current plans are dated Monday, um-
Well, even if they were, I couldn't read it, so would it matter? Well, even if they were, I couldn't read it, so wouldn't matter.
Yeah, twelve feet wide.
Um, and what is the slope of the driveway?
It's quite flat, actually, um, it's, it's, it's very flat, it's running along the five-twenty-six contour.
You're parallel with the contour.
Correct, yes, yeah, it's not a steep driveway.
I know that whole area drops pretty significantly, so. Okay, um, Matthew, anything?
I don't really have anything on this, to be honest, uh, my only concern was the wetlands and the proximity to it, but if they've already got approval from Wetlands Commission, then I don't.
Yeah, so they already went to the wetlands, um, the only real modification on the plan, uh, it's not fully reflected on the updated one, but it's not a ma- big deal. It was the extension of the erosion, erosion sentiment control, the silt fence, um, a little bit further on, yep, right there, and right there, see, Dan's got it. Um, uh, so, uh, just to wrap the site a little bit better, um, to protect against that. Um, I know the Wetlands Commission also really considered the style of the house, um, being that it's a raised ranch. Um, and that proximity particularly to the wetland behind it, um, there's not much banking on that wetland. But it's not in a floodplain or anything like that.
So the blue boxes are the wetlands?
Yes, sir, yep, yep, there's two again little intermittent water courses or drainage ditches, however you wanna call them, that again receive storm water from catch basins on North Road.
I figured you went through the effort of drawing the blue boxes to make sure we dinified them.
Yep, did my arts and crafts today.
Another modification the applicant made was just moving the house forward, initially it was a little further back.
If it's within the.
It meets all the setbacks, yep.
Burger, anything?
No, I'm fine.
John?
I'm good.
Matthew, one more time?
Yep, I'm all set.
Staff? Anybody wanna speak to the application for the public? No, then I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Matthew makes the second?
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
This is just so when you, if you, if, if you do approve this, um, I would say incorporate the wetlands, uh, regulations or wetlands conditions into yours. So you know, that way it's recognized, you know they went before wetlands, you know where wetlands put conditions on it, and you expect them to follow those conditions. They weren't major conditions, but they were still conditioned.
Adhere to the, uh, requirements of wetlands.
Yeah, when we file a Mylar, I'll be sure to update it to include that.
Yeah, there'll also be a separate, um, decision letter just for the wetlands.
Okay, great, great, do you like to have that whole letter posted on the Mylar, or just type up?
Ideally, if it can fit on your cover sheet of, of there, um, yes, uh, but either way, it has to get recorded individually.
Of course.
Planning and zoning, also.
Mm-hmm.
If I could ask a question?
Sir?
I, I just assume that that is what takes place if, if, uh, a planning or a wetland, wetlands approves the project. Whatever the decision was goes with the application at that point.
You're, you're not wrong, John, you're, it, it, it goes with it, um, it's just making sure everyone's clear that it, that it is, uh, a part of it. But yes, the, the, the wetlands decision holds if for some reason.
It doesn't have to be stated on the record, that's what I'm, by, uh, your plan and zoning.
No, it's just, it's, it's just that, um, sometimes we only get one of the letters recorded, and if it's the planning
Yeah.
Or I should say recorded on the maps, wetlands rec- wetlands was never recorded up until a few years ago. But what, the wetlands approval letter has to be recorded now, planning and zoning approval letter has to be recorded now, and we request that both of those letters are on the plans.
It's, it's always.
Fine, thank you.
It's always good, John, for the contractors to see what they're supposed to be adhering to, and they do that by looking at the plan more, more not, more than other things. And I would like to see that it po- uh, also written on it that is necessary for landscaping to be, um, as a resubdivision. Okay, where am I, we had a motion and a second, did we? All right, um, any more discussion by anybody? Well, that's on approval when we come to the approval, this is just closing the public hearing. Nope, that's all right, um, no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Oppose or abstentions, none, thank you. Okay. Hold on, we're, Anne Marie's passing, Anne Marie's passing papers around.
Okay.
You still don't have a picture, do you?
No, I just have a phone to my ear.
Okay.
Yeah, I was unable to get on either, I'm, I'm, I'm on a telephone strictly.
So it's, uh, Archer Surveying, uh, giving us a, for fee in lieu of open space, the appraisal value showing it at forty-six-three, what they're, forty-six thousand three hundred, which is. The appraisal that they're using is the one that was current by the, uh, town, cause it was done within the last three months, and don't normally allow that. But because it is so fresh that, I, I also, commission members have a opposition to that, we, we would, uh, they want us to approve it. Us- utilizing that current evaluation. Any comments to that? Burger, or John, or Matt?
I mean, I would assume that the appraisal that the town had done was accurate, so I don't see there being any.
Depends on who asked.
Well, it's, it's also because it's.
That, that's a judgment for the director.
Okay, that is, um, the appraisal is a date in time, a point in time. So that's why I believe Keith said that it's been done within the last three months, but it's up to the commission to approve or say that they want a separate appraisal.
To accept that.
Either approve it or say no, and they want a separate.
It's, it sounds to me like it's a fair market of what the, like, fair judgment of what the market value would be at this point. Okay. Anybody have any questions concerning this subdivision?
Do you want the presentation?
Yes, please.
Bruce is on.
Oh, okay, I apologize, Bruce, that's what happens when you, I don't see you.
That's all right, um, uh, for the record, uh, I am Bruce Woodis, a licensed landscape bear with Archer Surveying and K W P Associates. Representing pyramid builders, uh, on this two-lot subdivision. The subdivision is located, uh, at the intersection of Oda Street and Railroad Avenue, uh, in Dayville. Is, are, are people familiar with where this is located?
Recently, so.
Yes.
Okay, um, it's a, it's an odd street layout, it, it goes out to, almost to a point, and then turns around and goes back.
It's kind of like a loop.
It's kinda like a loop, yeah, Railroad Avenue comes out by where the liquor store is and the gas station is right by the railroad. So if you go down Railroad Avenue, curves around and then turns to Oda Street, comes back out again to Route one oh one. Uh, and anyway, this was a vacant piece of property, uh, pyramid builders purchased it. They took a free split, which is lot sixty-four dash one, uh, shown on the left-hand side of the, of the subdivision. And after taking their free split, now they're dividing it, uh, it again. There's already a house under construction on the right-hand lot at the point. The, there's, uh, municipal utilities in the street, sewer and water. So, uh, the proposal is to connect to them, there's no septic system or, or individual well, uh, for these lots. So it's a relatively simple, uh, division, um, there's not a lot of land disturbance, and there's no wetlands, uh, uh, in the area. So, um, that's kind of a brief overview, but I'll answer questions if anybody has any.
Bruce, I, I think one area of concern, it would be to have this footing staked for location, cause it, you're really right on the property lines here. For setbacks.
Absolutely.
Setbacks, I mean, not property lines.
Yeah, they're, they're right on the setback lines, and, uh, in the case of the building under construction, that already has been done. And will be done, of course, for the next, uh, next one, it's within a foot or two of the setback line.
Okay, so does, uh, do you have to submit a, as-built of the, uh, location to the town as in the past, or? Does it have to be stipulated, I guess, for, for this one?
Yeah, it's up, that's up to the town.
See, do you, have you had to do it for the other two?
Uh, not so far, not as yet.
Okay, but to me, this one is so tight, I personally would think it's not, it should be submitted, at least it's on the record out.
So with the zoning permits for the first two, um, we've had A two surveys submitted for the proposal. And then we meet on-site prior to pouring the footings and ensure that everything's been pinned out by the surveyor, that it's reflective of that A two survey. Uh, usually, we can forego the as-built, provided that that step is done. If for some reason that step's missed, then yes, the, uh, before, um, certificate of occupancy, I would be requiring an as-built.
Well, this, I mean, to me, it needed letter from the surveyor saying that it, he's actually staked it out.
Well, I, I typically meet the surveyor on-site.
Well, I think it would be good for the record, though, wanted it to cover everybody to have a letter saying that they.
It doesn't hurt, we've done that before.
Yeah, that's all, if you don't want, you know, an as-built, okay, maybe. But at least a letter, it's up for the record, for the file. Any other questions, commissioners? This'll be all landscaped as well, right, Bruce?
Oh, of course.
Okay, Matthew?
I mean, if it needs to be landscaped, it'd be nice to see a landscape plan, would it not, for this?
Well.
This is the only time this is coming in front of us, correct?
Yes, if, I don't know if we get into exactly what plants or stuff, it's more just make sure it's.
That it's not dirt.
That it's not dirt, correct.
Okay.
I suppose you'd always make the point, it could be crushed stone everywhere or something, I don't know, but I guess you'd have to.
Yeah, so again, that, like, CO, one of the requirements, we, we deal with the Connecticut E N S guidelines, which just, actually is gonna have an updated version in March. That's official, but, uh, we're currently using a two thousand two version of that, which has a planning schedule that's required, and that goes for all, um, residential or even commercial structures, whether or not it's stated on the record, it's the requirement on, of, by having the license. So we look for that, and we make, uh, contractors bond if, say it's December, and you can't do the landscaping
Right.
to ensure that it's done by the spring.
I mean, like, historically, if it's an existing lot, the predate zoning.
Yeah, if, if it's like a small, a small addition or something, the, um, the landscaping would be very minor. Uh, but of new construction, it's, it's always a required item.
But you're saying, well, as if, if it's an existing lot, it never has been, that's why I'm not saying that.
No, so existing a lot, vacant lot, and somebody goes to build a brand-new house, we want to ensure that it meets all the E N S guidelines, so they have to have.
Who's, who's E N S guidelines?
The state of Connecticut's.
So they're requiring that?
They're, they're also referenced in our zoning under the E N S section. So there, there's a, we're, general requirements for when you're doing land clearing, particularly over a half acre.
Okay, so that's new. All right, any other questions for commissioners, staff?
My only question is if you agree with everything that they've put through for their fee in lieu of.
Well, I do have one question. So there are lots of folks, I think, who, I mean, we give our empty bottles to the boy scouts, but, uh, because standing at the, uh, machines at the Stop and Shop is a, is a head-banging experience. So I'm just wondering, um.
Burger, are you talking about this one, this is a, this is a subdivision for a three-house lot? This is not the redemption center, we haven't gotten there.
Okay.
All right, okay, thanks.
So. This, the, the value, the value of the, the one created lot, the new created lot, as, as I'm reading this, is thirty-one thousand. But that's based on a, the percentage of the, the forty-six thousand, so I guess I misunderstood this, so forty-six thousand three hundred is the lot value before you split it. So then, now at twenty thousand square feet, you're saying it's still a dollar fifty-two a square foot, which I would question. Cause it's still a house lot, and a house lot, I would think it'd still be worth more than that, thirty-one thousand, I'd like to be able to buy a house lot for thirty-one thousand, quite frankly, so.
Yeah, now I know the street is over that.
Well, either way, a dollar fifty-two for that ratio isn't really a basis to me for value. I question that.
Yeah, you're saying have the two, excuse me? They, they would be valued individually, basically, is what you're saying.
Yeah, they, well, now, what you're saying is, is forty-six thousand as the combined two lots.
Right, right.
So as, as one lot.
Yeah.
Now you create two house lots, all right, and you just use the ratio to, to come up with that value of a dollar fifty-two, and, and you're appraising a sec- a newly-created lot at the dollar fifty-two value per square foot. Which I don't agree with. I would think it's gonna actually be more, a house lots would be more. Having said that, what is the alternative?
So typically, at the date of receiving the application under the subdivision regulations, both parties, the town and the applicant, can agree upon a, um, appraiser. That discussion wasn't had at the acceptance, um, so the other section under the subdivision regulations talks about an applicant submitting a narrative. Um, and I think that's what the applicant is attempting to do, based off the town's assessed value from October first of just this last year. But the commissioner, there's definitely time on the application, and it's up to the commission, um, if they choose to, um, uh, require a professional assessment or not.
Commissioners, input?
Not I.
You're fine with the thirty-one thousand?
It's, since I have no paper in front of me that explains it, I really don't have a way of visualizing it, so I'll just.
Well, what they did is, you've got, you do understand it was a piece of land, three-quarters of an acre approximately, and it was valued based on the town's appraisal at seventy thousand dollars.
Right.
At, uh.
Forty-six.
Forty-six thousand dollars, excuse me, forty-six thousand for the.
But is the town always, is the town always mobile?
Well, no, 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 I don't, it's a, it's a recent appraisal, so I don't, I don't question that.
Okay.
But after the subdivision, after if it was approved, they're saying, based on the ratio of dollars and acres, that it's a dollar fifty-two a square foot. And based on that, they're evaluating the new lot at thirty-one thousand, which I question. Maybe it's a valid point, but I, I question it, so I think it would probably be worth more than that, but. I'm just asking for input from the rest of the commissioners, whether you agree or not.
I think that that's a valid point, so.
Um, can I just read a part of the regulation? Those of you who have your subdivision regulations with you, it's on page thirty-two, um, it's fee in lieu of open space. Under number one, it does say that such fee or a combination of fee and the fair market of land transferred shall be equal to not more than ten percent of the fair market. of land transferred shall be equal to not more than ten percent of the fair market value of the land to be subdivided prior to the approval of the subdivision. So if this was done in, prior to the approval of the subdivision, are they using the correct?
So that puts into, into, uh, it's, it's confusing now, so that if you, if people don't, I mean, somebody somewhere has to do the numbers and come up right to-
Right.
You know, it's like, me, most of us sitting here can't do the math, and I know I can't do the math in my head, I couldn't even draw papers, so.
So, let me-
Does that mean that, that that should be put on hold, so that a number can actually be analyzed and posted or something?
Well, as it, as it reads, I, I think they've met, they've met the requirement.
Okay.
So if that's, if, if it's supposed to be subdivided prior to the approval of the subdivision, which the forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty did, it did the total lot acreage, and what they did is that they took that total lot acreage, they changed it to square feet, um-
So it should be ten percent of the forty-six thousand?
Well, it should be, um-
Because that's the value-
What they're doing is-
They removed the free split.
They removed the free split.
So, because that's not part of the subdivision.
The free split has our, as-
That's as of right.
That's already occurred.
So, so the overall value, the appraised value, is the land raw with all three.
So all three lots-
Yep.
Combined was appraised at forty-six thousand prior to any construction?
That's correct.
Prior to any construction, prior to any-
And then on the next section, when they talk about the subdivision itself, they're saying the value there is, uh, based off of the dollars per square foot of the raw land, right, from the overall set by the town, is, they're looking at only twenty thousand square feet, so they're minusing out that free split, and that comes up with a total value of thirty-one thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars, and they're taking ten percent of that. In terms of, um, recent subdivisions, other ones, it's, it's kind of on par, uh, but that's, uh, you know, again, it's up to the commission in terms of what they want to see. So you can, you can ask, it's in your purview to ask for a professional assessment, or you can say, well, the town had it assessed and they have an appraised value, uh, or they have, uh, an appraised value and an assessed value, um, the appraised value is what, so the higher number is what they're showing here. And then, so I would, I would turn you on to the town property card, so that, that's where that appraised value is, uh, forty-six, three hundred and thirty, um, whereas what they're actually being taxed on for the land, if they hadn't done anything, thirty-two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars is what, it's, is the land value according to their actual, what they're being taxed on.
Well, the assessment value is never a full value of a property.
Yeah, that, it's, it's the appraisal value that, that we're dealing with, so-
It's convoluted.
Yeah.
To say the least.
And that's, uh, the, I, and you do have the, one of the applicants on, but I, um, the other applicant, or Paul Archer, the other surveyor for Archer Surveying, when presenting it to staff, was, uh, saying, well, the town had it appraised in October, he didn't see the value of, of re, redoing that process, um, when the application, I think, was submitted in December.
Okay, so what's the solution to get past this bump in the road?
If the commission is okay with it, you can move forward with the number as submitted, or you can choose to ask the applicant to come back with a professional assessment, and you can, um, deal with that at the next meeting.
I can tell you this, I just did the math on my phone, I have a calculator on the phone, and the math, the way they have put it through, it is correct, so it depends-
How is it correct?
I, I'm just saying his, the way he calculate, not saying the way he calculate.
I'm not questioning the math, it's, it's a matter of, um-
But I think, I thought Virga was, she wanted to make sure.
No, it's a, to me, it's, it's a matter of value.
Okay.
You're, you're looking at, all right, so it's forty-six thousand dollars, and it really confuses it, because now you've got two house lots already taken away from the forty-six, because, right, because you're saying-
Only one.
But it's, it's also a, it's a lot sandwiched now between two properties, so I'm just kind of throwing it out there, if the value comes back as less, that's-
If it comes back as less.
It could.
But the, if you have to remember, it has to be ten percent of the fair market value of the land to be subdivided prior to the approval of the subdivision. So it, that, to me, I don't know if it's-
Yeah, I think the numbers make sense on this, it's just not very clearly identified the breakdown of the forty-six thousand with the existing free split minus the additional two-thirds of the property on this, so.
I think what-
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about the property that remains after the free split?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so it's, it's a matter of whether or not, uh, you know, that, the ten percent of that valuation is, is a mobian office?
Which it is.
And if there's a portion on the value, well, then we have to get a, a settlement done, if not, we approve it, that's all.
I think after going through this and knowing that it's before the subdivision occurs, that I would be okay, I'd be in, in favor of approving the fee as is submitted.
Okay, John, do you agree with Matthew?
You know, if it follows that, uh, uh, outline that I just stated, from, and I'm only saying that from what I'm hearing this evening, you know, where once a free split takes place, that's no longer a part of, of the subdivision, and if that value of that property, uh, including what, uh, includes the residents of today, and what is going to be, you know, a separate lot, comes up to ten percent, we're good.
Okay, so Virga, you're good?
Somebody has to do the math.
We are, no, the math's fine, it's all about valuations.
Yeah, they, they did the math.
So you're talking forty-six thousand dollars for the whole thing before, and, but now you've got a free split taken away from it, so now, what's before?
So that comes, that comes out to-
We're subdividing the remaining.
Right.
So it's-
Then let's get reprisal.
So it's, you know, but I'm fine with it, if you guys are fine with it, I'm fine with it, so-
Can I just explain again? What they did is they took the total appraised value, forty-six thousand three hundred, and what they did is they found out how, what the acreage was, which was zero point seven zero acres, which comes out to thirty thousand four hundred ninety-two square feet. So what they did is they figured out what that appraisal of forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty was per square foot, which was a dollar fifty-two. So what they did then is that they took the area to be subdivided, which is zero point four seven, and which came out to twenty thousand four hundred seventy-three square, square feet. Now, if you remember, the total square footage was thirty thousand four hundred ninety-two, they're now saying it's twenty thousand four, four hundred seventy-three, so that free split was taken out. So what they did then is that they took the twenty thousand four hundred seventy-three square feet, and they multiplied it by the, the one dollar fifty-two cents, and they came out with a, a value of thirty-one thousand one hundred nineteen. And then ten percent of thirty-one thousand one hundred nineteen goes down to three thousand one hundred and twelve. And I did the, I redid all those calculations on my calculator, and that, all those figures are correct.
Does that reflect the new, uh, evaluation prices per square foot that we just received?
Yes.
Okay.
It was the one that was just put in, and that's, you know, this was printed on, the la- latest update was eleven-ten, but the appraisal was actually done in October, so that's within a three-month timeframe, because an appraisal is only, in all reality, appraisal is only good for so long, but a three, is it reasonable to have an appraisal for, within three months' time? That's, that's what the commission has to say, and if everybody's agreeable with that, then you can move forward with what you want.
I think the market slowed down, some things aren't changing quickly as they were a while ago.
Okay, so we're-
Do you think that makes sense?
Do you want to go with this, Virga, or not?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, John?
It's defensible.
John?
Well, I don't know if I understood what, and Marie said about, you know, we just got, the, the town now just got a new assessment, right?
Right.
That price, is that reflective of the new assessment?
Right, right.
Everyone's been assessed that.
That was the assessment for the three lots, as you're seeing on your drawing.
Who, uh, yeah, but is that reflective of the new assessment?
That's the new assessment. Yes, that's the new assessment prior to the splits.
I'm good with it then.
Matthew?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions on anything else on this project? None? Commissioners, staff? Go ahead. Anybody?
I hear none.
Oh, okay, Virga? Staff?
I hear none.
I heard, gotcha, gotcha. John?
I'm good.
Matthew, one more time?
I have no questions.
Staff? Com- uh, anybody from the public? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve, two-three, one-three, two-six.
We're just closing it right now, John.
Let's just close in the public hearing, John.
Closing, yes.
Okay, so John, you're making a motion. Who's making the second?
I'll make a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Of aye, opposed and abstentions, none. Okay, that's closed. Okay, next. Special permit number twenty-three dash thirteen twenty-seven, DMD LLC Mahara Real Estate LLC, landowner thirteen, Commerce Avenue, JAS map one ninety-eight, lot sixty-eight, point four-two acres as the borough, central business district, construction of a redemption center to be entirely within the structure, existing structure. Borough zoning regs, section four forty, CBD, Article seven, special permit, section four ninety, site plan review. Somebody to discuss it?
They are here, they're on the computer.
Okay, go ahead, sir, and-
Yeah, my name is Krishna, I will be the manager for the facility, and I have Jamin with me, he's, he's an owner of BMD, uh, so, um, basically, we are trying, we are going to open a bottle redemption center where the permit used to be, um, and we have a site plan, uh, am I okay to share the screen, or?
Yes.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Okay.
Hello?
It's there.
Yeah.
They're working on it, Virga.
What, what's happening?
We're looking at a plan, they're trying to post it up on the-
Okay.
-screen.
Okay.
Just a clarification, Virga, this is the redemption center that you were talking about before, and you have those plans in your packet.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
So basically, uh, what's going to happen is where you see the main entrance, that's where the public will be able to enter from the main road, and we'll have a, if you see on the picture, we have a bottle machine which we are going to put in, that's an automated machine where plastic bottles and aluminum cans can be counted like up to three hundred a minute, so if you are aware, when you go to other redemption places like Big Boy or Stop &amp; Shop, you have to stand in a queue, dropping bottle one by one, and that's how you get the count. This is going to be different, where employee will be there, they will be helping you, and, basically, in the machine, the bottles and cans will be dumped, and it will be auto-counted, and based on that, uh, the, the deposit will be given back to the customers. And now, on, on the floor, um, as, as you enter, there'll be about like ten to fifteen feet space before the machine starts, so there'll be enough space for customers to stand, and also an employee. In the back of the building, we have two storage place, uh, spaces, and also ample space where we can, uh, store the day-to-day empties collected from their customers. In the rear, we have a back door and a garage door, uh, from the garage door, all the companies like Pepsi, Coca-Cola, Budweiser, and other supplies will be coming and, uh, picking up their cans and bottles, once a week at least, sometime depend on the need, they'll be coming in, uh, separately like twice a week. So, our plan is to not store the cans and bottles and keep the facility clean, but just in case if we need to store a few, we have ample storage space as well. Any, any questions?
So, I have one question.
I think it's a really needed facility, I mean, it's a, I think it's something that's important, there's so much stuff that gets clustered around here.
John, John's got a question.
So, so I have a question, just looking at the floor plan, and it might be just something was turned off, I think I see a toilet near the back door, is, there, there's a full bathroom facility for your employees that have walls and everything like that, correct?
Okay, privacy and everything, okay.
So, is there anything to be stored outside?
No, nothing is going to be stored outside.
So if we drive by the place, all you're going to see is the same building or modified building of the same-
Current.
Footprint, yeah. So the, every, all the product gets delivered, and, I mean, when you, it comes in, is it coming in, like, I've got the map here, or the picture, the actual aerial picture?
Yeah.
And you've got that white truck backed up to a bay? Oh, so, no, it's coming in through the front door, you said, all the product will come into the front door?
Front door, current, yes, so if you see the aerial picture, if you see this picture, what I have on the, on the screen?
Yes.
Where you see, where you see the, where you see the white, white, this white van?
Yes.
That's actually a side of the building, so there is, in the front here, where my cursor is, there is a door, where customer will be able to enter, they will drop their cans and bottles, and they will leave from there. You also have a, this is a side exit, where employee can access if needs to be.
My, my concern is, or question is-
Yeah.
If a person comes in with a bag full of cans, that's one thing, but what if somebody comes in with a pickup truck full of cans?
Then we have a parking space on the side of the building, where you see the van, uh, right here, and also across the street, there is, there is like, uh, you know, town parking, they have like almost, uh, this, this is our space, on, on the right-hand side, where you see the cars, there is a parking space, about ten to fifteen cars can be parked at a time, and across the street, there is also parking, so-
Well, I, I understand that, it's more about, um, handling larger volumes of cans and bottles.
Oh, so you mean that, okay, so if a person comes in with a bag full of cans, that, that bag will be entirely be dumped into the machine, and machine can count up to three hundred cans in a minute, so that will be like really quick, this is the machine.
Well, I'm concerned is, is that the larger volumes, I mean, once this gets out, I would anticipate that you might have like a van, somebody coming in with a small van, with, you know, they collected a lot of cans, and then they start dropping off big vans, and are they going to be parking in the street and then slowly unloading them, or?
No, 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 they, they will be parking in the located parking spot only, uh, parking on the street, we will not be allowing the parking on this.
So they'll be carrying the bags across the street?
No, they will be carrying the bags from the parking lot, which is, uh, from the aerial view, you see on the side of the building, right, where the number sixty-eight is there, where I'm hovering the cursor.
So if you have a person come in with a larger truck or vehicle, and it's full of cans, uh, hopefully bagged, you have a- you have a, you have a separate docking station to empty that vehicle?
No, no, they, they will come through the, uh, main, main door only. But if needed, we, like, if, when you see the, you see the white truck which is, which is backed up?
Yes.
We also can open that space if needed, like, somebody's coming with a truck full of cans and bottles, yes, we can open it. But majority, the majority of the customers will be coming just from the front door.
Well, I, I, that's what I'm, I'm getting at, I just, I, I can just anticipate that we would end up with larger peop- larger volumes of veh- uh-
Yeah, yeah, if that comes in, then yes, we can, also in the back of the building, we have a, a garage door. So, we can, if needed, we can also open that one.
So, you're processing, are you crushing the current cans, or are you just separating them?
No, we're not crushing it, we are, we are separating, sorting it, uh, by the company. Like Miller Coors, Budweiser, or other brands, Pepsi, Coca-Cola, and they will be coming and picking up.
So, how, how do you, how do you load those vehicles? Where, where do you load those vehicles?
Those vehicles will be coming around in the back of the building, where we have the garage door, and they will picking, they will be picking up from there.
So, the opposite side of the white van that we're looking at?
Correct, yeah, if you see, uh, in this map, if you see there is a garage door on the back, from there, companies will come and pick up their, their ready bags and boxes of bottles and another.
So, do you have signage or anything to be put up or change?
Uh, we will be changing the signing in the front of the building, and once we get in touch with the companies, we will be sharing the plan with them so that they know where to come and pick up, uh, the empties from.
John?
So, on, on the pickup, uh, two questions, the garage door, is that a loading dock, or is that on grade? Like, is it, like garage door?
It's on the ground.
On the ground, okay, so, so you're, you're anticipating for pickup vehicles, something with a lift gate, or like vans? Or are we looking at like a full fifty-two foot trailer?
No, just a van, just a van size or a lift gate size.
Okay.
That will not be, you know, uh, big eighteen-wheelers will not be coming.
My, my concern would be with Water Street, if you had a eighteen-wheeler and somebody was trying to back up to that, there, they'd be blocking that whole street.
Correct, correct, yeah, I, I don't think so we'll have a big eighteen-wheelers coming in, because our plan is like, you know, to come the companies once a week, and if a different companies are coming in, we, they will be coming, going in and out very quickly, max ten minutes.
Okay, and then I, I had one more question, but it was more on the intake side. So, um, and I, I believe I discussed this with you guys at the counter, but I don't know if it was brought up here, so, the machine uses compressed air to sort, right, and there's no washing in the machine, correct? Like, there's no, no washing, okay, so, so there's no, um, discharge of, of, of cleaning water, fluid, or anything like that going into, like, uh, into the sewer system, okay, good.
Nothing, nothing.
So, um, are, how were, how were your cans when they leave the facility, are they bagged?
Bagged, yes, correct.
So, like those three hundred cans? In a, in a bag?
Uh, in a plastic, uh, clear see-through bag, and they will be picked up, uh, just, just the bags will be picked up, like, as it is.
Okay.
So, if you see on, on the, on the, on, in the machine, on the map, you see little squares after the machine. So, there will be, uh, what do you call it, a conveyor belt? And machine will be sorting them out, and throwing the cans and bottles in each of the, each of the squares, that will be a boxes. So, once the boxes will be full, they will be just, you know, replacing the bag and putting in the storage, waiting to be picked up.
If I could-
Yes, John.
I see two problems. You know, these cans contain liquids, uh, yeah, and bottles. I mean, uh, everyone's supposed to rinse them, uh, if they do that, there's, there's water left in them, uh, you know, with some residue of what is contained, others don't rinse them at all, and they contain a lot of, uh, the original fluid that was in them, uh, and the other problem is density. If they don't crush those things on site, I mean, that, I don't know how many square feet they have in that building, but that thing is gonna fill up at an awful high rate, if, uh, if, uh, what I anticipate the, the volume to be is correct. I mean, just watch that Big Y, for example, people walking in there with these huge bags. Well, if, if it wasn't for those machines, uh, condensing them, uh, my god, the volume would be, uh, would be something, uh, of a larger magnitude, that's for sure.
That is.
Uh, I think, I think they're gonna have to deal with fluids to a degree, and they're also gonna have a, a problem in as far as volume is concerned. So, that means more trucks coming than normal in order to pick up, uh, that merchandise. They're gonna have to get it off the premises.
So, you're, are you saying, are you, let me ask this, even the box trucks or any trucks picking up product, will they be perpendicular to the road, or will they be parallel with the ro- road?
Uh, parallel with the road.
Okay.
On the backside, not, not in the front?
Right, right. I understand. So, that, so there won't be, there shouldn't be any interference with traffic?
No, not at all. And, uh, to, to discuss further about the storage, that is why if you see the storage space, we have like two, two story, uh, storage. So, one where the garage door is, that's, that's like a ground level storage, and there is also a second floor storage, if needed, we can, we can also use that.
What are your hours of operation planned to be?
Uh, as of now, we are planning to open from nine AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, uh, close.
Monday through Saturday, and how many employees?
There'll be four employees into, as of now, depending on the volume, we might change increasingly.
So, all deliveries and pickups will be between the nine AM and six PM?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions, commissioners? Matthew?
I have no questions.
Verga?
Well, I have a small one, and only because, um, we donate our filter bottles to the Boy Scouts, and the Boy Scouts make some money.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I'm wondering, how the money change, I mean, people are going to anticipate getting their, their dime back or something.
Correct.
I mean, I, I don't know how that's a part of it works, but I just, you know, would like to know that, that there is a way to handle that part of it.
Of course, uh, so to answer your question, uh, the machine will be counting the cans or bottles, and it will give us a printout with a barcode, uh, stating that that many cans and bottles were there, and we will have it registered by the machine, and right then and then, the, the customer or person who is there returning the cans, they will get their money.
Okay. I'm just nosy at this point, so if the customer gets some cash, where does your cash come from? I mean, so there's like two paybacks, you know, one for the customer that's costing it, and one for you managing it.
Verga, Verga, Verga.
Yeah.
The economy, uh, the economics of the application really don't apply to us. That's up, that's up to them.
No, ask yourself.
I know, ask them after, maybe they'll answer.
Not something-
Anybody else? Any other questions? Any other pertinent questions?
No.
John, one more time, John, anything?
No, I don't, I don't, uh, have any more concerns, I was just, the, the two issues that I stayed was just, you know, what I'm observing.
Gotcha.
I'm good.
Verga, one more time, you're all set?
Mm-hmm.
Matthew?
I am still good.
Staff?
So, just a comment, I think, 'cause the applicant alluded to it, they have another store space on the same property, I think the old Stove King?
Mm-hmm.
That's adjacent, um, and that, you guys mentioned that as a possibility for future storage? Or another line?
Yes.
No, it's-
Oh, over there.
Yeah. Okay, so that was a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Anybody from the public wanna speak to this?
Can I just say one thing for them?
Yes.
If you do expand, and you start taking over more, uh, area, you're gonna have to come back and talk to us, okay?
Yes, sure, yes.
Okay, one more time, public input, anybody? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Okay.
Motion by- Second by Verga, is that right?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, four ayes, no abstentions and no noes. That, public hearing is closed, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. Subdivision application twenty-three thirteen, Kathy A. Hess is withdrawn.
He's withdrawn, yes.
The special permit application, JIPF, has continued, special permit application, John Alucad, uh, thirteen twenty-four, Weld, well, five forty-three, Warrigan Road. Can I have a motion, please?
Uh, which one's this, two?
No, Benny, the third one, number three.
It's number two, three, one, three, two, four.
Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve application, uh, as submitted, uh, and grant the request of the waive, the waiver.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Want to say something else?
No, I'm just reading my notes, make sure we got everything included. Okay, motion to approve by Matthew, seconded by Verga, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verga Lawrence?
Yeah.
John Serenopolis?
Yeah.
Matthew Wendorf?
Yes.
Keith Thurlo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that motion's approved. Resubdivision application, thir- twenty-three thirteen twenty-five, Gary Jaworski, ten, sixteen oh-two North Road, JIS map twenty-one, lot eleven, nine point four-three acres. Resubdivision of lot eleven into two lots, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-three thirteen twenty-five, um, to approve it, uh, provided that all the conditions of inland wetlands are met. I think that's it.
The, the wetlands approval be a, a part of the plan, and landscaping is also a part of the plan. And the family transfer, yes, very good.
Thought I took good notes.
Okay, so Matthew made the motion.
John seconded.
John seconds. Um, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
John Serenopolis?
Yes.
Matthew Wendorf?
Yes.
Verga Lawrence?
Yeah.
Keith Thurlo?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, that approved. Subdivision application twenty-three dash thirteen twenty-six, Pyramid Builders, seventy Otter Street, JIS map one-one-three, lot sixty-four, medium density, subdivision to create two lots. Can I have a motion, please?
So, uh, do I have to make a motion to approve the fee first, and then we can approve the whole thing?
It's all a condition.
Is that all together?
Yeah, the, the fee is part of the conditions.
Just accept the, the appraisal as it, as written, as submitted.
Okay. So, I would like to, uh, make a motion for, uh, application twenty-three dash thirteen twenty-six, uh, to approve, um, as submitted, uh, additionally with the approving the fee, uh, in lieu of open space, as submitted by, uh, as submitted, uh, as part of the application.
Okay, who has a second? Verga seconds?
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Matthew Wendorf?
Yes.
Verga Lawrence?
Yeah.
John Serenopolis?
Yes.
Keith Thurlo?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
That's approved, special permit application twenty-three thirteen twenty-seven, DMD LLC, thirteen Commerce Avenue, JIS map one ninety-eight, lot sixty-eight, Central Business District, construction of a redemption center to be entirely within the structure. Can I have a, uh, site plan review, can I have a, um, motion, please?
I'd like a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-three dash thirteen twenty-seven, as submitted. To approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Verga, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I have one, uh, thing that I-
Sure, go ahead.
-care to, the health upon, should be very involved in this endeavor, uh, you know?
Yeah, that would be, I think, up to the billing department, no?
Yeah, that, that-
But there's no way to stake down the record, you know? This center is going right up in the middle of town, you certainly don't want, uh, it to be an issue with, uh, flies, for example, smell, liquids, you know? That's my thought, I should have mentioned it earlier, but it doesn't occur to me.
So, so, yeah, i- if there, if there was an issue after the fact, we would deal with it as a nuisance under, you know, town ordinance, or prohibited use, um, uh, and tap into any agency as needed, so either the Health Department or Connecticut Deep. Um, this type of application is subject to a state license and registry, so, um, there is state oversight.
All right, so it'll be covered.
Okay.
So, that was a second by Verga?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Verga Lawrence?
Yeah.
John Serenopolis?
Yes.
Matthew Wendorf?
Yes.
Keith Thurlo?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, guys. Hmm? New business. Special permit application twenty-four thirteen twenty-eight, Austin Knoll, Fred Schram, landowner four twenty-seven Chestnut Hill, rural development, welding and fabrication business, out of the garage, RD section. Receive and schedule for public hearing Tuesday, February twentieth.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to receive and sched- I mean, provided that we have everything, right? Keith, you normally say that, I guess.
Yeah.
We can't, staff's not allowed to tell you if it's, it's up to the commission, we've been told by legal counsel, it's up to the commission to determine if it's-
Heard that there at the last presentation.
So.
Oh.
Life has changed again.
Great, okay, well, we're gonna receive it and schedule it and hope that it's complete. Uh, I, yeah, I'll make a motion to receive it and schedule for a public hearing Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed or abstentions none. Zone text change application twenty-four thirteen twenty-nine, Lake Apartments LLC. Revision to multi-family zoning requirements for clarification purposes for density. Receive and schedule for hearing on Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty-four, can you explain that?
Yeah, the Allison part, can you explain that?
So, so initially, there's a little nuance in the state law in regards to zo- yeah, right, and as in regards to zoning enforcement. So, um, there was previously a, a law that required certification from Casio, um, which is a nonprofit in the state for zoning enforcement officers, and it was just as of the date. Um, the legislator made a clarification- Um, the legislator made a clarification that said, if you had been appointed before January uh, of this year, um, uh, January first, then you are grandfathered in, right? They made they made that modification because there was a lot of people that didn't want to go through the process of getting certified, having said done it for thirty or forty years, um, and having other certifications. So um, we as staff are generally already certified. Allison, it it's something that she would still have to go for classes for. But when we realized that there was that opening, we were like, well, let's get her appointed before the January cutoff. However, last month's meeting didn't happen, so you can ignore that note.
That note was supposed to have been erased and I thought it was erased.
This whole line is supposed to have been erased?
No, just the one for Allison, not about the zone text change.
Just the one for Allison, yep.
The zone text change is, what happened with that is there's a revision to the multi-family zoning because there's um, the the way you can determine density for that was not clear. It was um, it could be read different ways, so they want to come through and make sure that it is clear.
How do you do that if it can be read in different ways?
So so right now, it's it's gray, the way.
So they want to rewrite it?
They want, yeah, so they're proposing some stronger, I would say stronger, more clarifying language.
So you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive and schedule for hearing on Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty-four.
Have a second?
I'll take it.
Which one wants a second? I'll give it to John this time, okay, Virga?
That's fine.
Okay.
I won't count.
Okay. You got that, Joanne? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Four ayes. Okay, that's scheduled.
What'd you call me?
Four ayes. Okay. Adoption of minutes, regular meeting minutes, November twentieth. Can I have a motion, please?
I didn't catch anything wrong, so I'm.
You make, so you're making a motion?
Yeah, it's gotta be you guys.
Second, John?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposer, abstentions, none. Okay.
I am, I'm abstaining.
One abstention, I'm sorry, I apologize. Got that, Joanne? Matthew?
I am abstaining from that one, yes.
Absent.
Absent.
Okay, correspondence. We got the meeting days for twenty twenty-four. Good zoning practice, yep. Department reports, Economic Development Director report?
Sure. Um, we had several business openings over the last six weeks. Um, Love Me Forever is located at one twenty-four Westcott Road, um, on the top floor where the photography studio is. Um, she relocated from Norwich to Killingley. Um, inside the Stop and Shop, there's a new clinic called Clinic Called On Med Clinic. It's sponsored by Hartford Hospital. Um, and it really fulfills a need, an unmet need in the community for sports, physicals, for kids. If you have an ailment, you can go in, schedule an appointment, um, and it's right at the front of the Stop and Shop. Um, they had ribbon cutting last uh, Friday. Um, now, right across the street in the old um, insurance property is um, called Northeast Opportunity for Wellness. It's programming, free programming for children, um, STEM enrichment and art classes. Um, and the C N A Boot Camp, they had a ribbon cutting back in September, but I didn't mention it at that time. But they have ongoing C N A um, certification. They also have scholarships and they're connected with the workforce development. So they have rotating classes at the beginning of every month. Um, and that is what I have to report.
Okay.
We have a town council liaison.
Ula?
Ula, you're still muted, oh, okay.
Yeah, I I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, from the special town council meeting, um, um, Joe went over on the plan of conservation and development. And from Tuesdays, um, last Tuesday's town council meeting, we honored all the fire departments and EMS that helped with um, the mill fire. And if you've ever visited the site, that mill was very close to um, residential property. And they did an awesome job. There was only some melting. It's surprising that none of the buildings went up in fire. So we are very proud of um, all of the firefighters and EMS. We also um, approved um, uh, many appointments and um, reappointments to the boards and commissions. We have a a huge amount of people from the community um, reaching out and um, volunteering. Um, and from uh, this town manager's report, um, Owen Bell Improvement, uh, we received uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollar funding request, um, may flex their help with that. Um, to help build with the Joyce Ritchie Pavilion. Um, the dredging of the pond, um, is still um, on hold. We're waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers. And um, hopefully we'll be able to start on a toddler splash pad in addition to the um, splash pad for older kids. Um, from the storm, the huge storm, um, that we had, the rainstorm, the response, um, there was um, power outage that affect the um, pumps that uh, pump the water from um, Alexandria Lake, and there was um, some sewage that flooded about nine properties. And the town um, paid for um, having that cleanup and will um, be providing assistance for um, additional um, renovations um, when their appraisals come up. On the Box Culver update on the Culver on Valley Road, over Mashin, Chupkin Brook, and can be placed and the roads can be opened. Yay! And um, they're looking to um, move the operations to do the Culver on Bear Hill Road. And um, Bear Hill Road should have been closed on January second, and hopefully it'll open in three months. Um, the Housing Authority, um, Executive Director Kell Green, um, has applied with uh, for some small city grants, um, to help with the renovations of Burchworth Terrace, which would include um, bathtubs, handicapped showers, new kitchens, um, new um, splits for air conditioning and heating, new floors, painting. Those buildings are overdue for renovations and previous um, applications for a small city grants were um, uh, had gone to the other part of the state. And we also um, should looked for um, dates for the budget meetings, and those should be approved next month. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ula.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
You got one.
Can I have a second? A second? John, thank you.
I was just making sure you weren't sleeping, John.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Appreciate your time.